Did they see anything changes on the agenda?
No changes.
And first thing up is Tom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They're lagging in, so I don't think about doing that.
Tom?
What do you got first, Tom?
Oh, we're just, we need to give you an update on how things are going out there and where we're at with our, our grant programs and everything there, so I'll start off by, uh, starting with the Connect Five. Right now, we're showing it's all complete except for the final color paint on the markings of the runway. And that didn't get completed just because of the, the weather. So, they're showing it is ninety-five percent complete, but, um, but it really is complete as far as functionality, operation, everything's good until spring, we can get a dry piece of pavement to paint, so.
Is there any potential hazards for not having it painted?
No, no, it's, uh, they put down the first coat, they have to wait for the asphalt to cure and stain that first coat so that it doesn't permanently change the color of the white striping.
Yeah, we, we have paint out there, we just don't have the final.
Yeah, just, we just needed the second coat of paint when it comes time to get the weather for it. But other than that, everything's up and running great. Uh, the new approach lights, they've already been used a couple times by DMS airplanes coming in, so that was a big benefit in a hurry where we'd have winds out of the south and they had to fly in, in the snow. They use those approach strobes to, uh, to get in without any problems, so it's been well-used already, so.
How's that snow plow holding up?
How's it holding up?
Yeah, we, we have the equipment. We used to have a front end loader out there, and we have a big truck with a plow. Everything's, we have everything out there we need to keep it snowing.
Yeah, it's going good, actually, with that new, the, the big truck out there, it makes a big difference in, in what's, you know, going on out there as far as, I mean, what was taking us online for plows, two or three hours ago. So, we can keep up with the snow much better than what that old truck was, so that's working good. And then we've got the, still have the loader out there for me with several rounds, we get plows in place, so. I think we're doing good.
Sounds great.
What do you have on the, on the list of things to do this coming summer?
What, this coming summer?
We, we got the, the grant ninety-nine percent complete.
Well, we're, we're in the process of, um, of the Connect Six grant right now. The paperwork's on, it's been handed, so now we're, we're looking at, uh, I think sometime here in February, how we go up the boardroom and present the, the grant to the board.
Yeah, for the sake of the audience, so what does a grant address?
Uh, the, what we're doing is in two thousand, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, it's a, it's a multi-year project. We're gonna be doing the, the Abrams and the taxiways, we're gonna be repaving a lot of that. We're putting up a new rotating beacon and tower so that the safety hazard of having to crawl on top of that building, especially during the winter, will be, it'll be completely, and we'll, we'll be able to, you know, just maintain the, uh, the beacon in a safe manner rather than crawling around on that top of that building. So, those are the two, the two main things that'll be happening. The, out of that grant will be the, the Abrams and improved parking areas. We're trying to get it to where we can expand even our, our automobile parking out there, and that's looking pretty good, so hopefully we, we continue to, as long as the grant comes into way, we've got it written right now, we should be able to put in a, at least eight to ten car parking lot out there. Um, so there's actually a spot, designated spot for people to come out and keep them out off of the, the taxiways and the parking area for the aircraft.
So, Tom, maybe you can talk a little bit about some of the interior renovation things that are going on, will be going on in addition to everything we've done already, the, the new door, uh, where we're at with that, and, and then our other airport, any, any of your thoughts on the airport?
I really haven't, we haven't done much with the other airport, just, um, I'm gonna have to go up there. I tried to get an electric a couple times to, to repair the lighting issue where the, some of the lights weren't coming on. I've been up there once to address it, replace the light in the beacon, but I need to go back up. But we're gonna have to have, you know, a nice dry day to do that, we can't, I can't, could warm like that, I'm gonna have to dig up a section of line there and figure out where the low voltage wiring is, have an issue. So that'll be hopefully sometime this spring, you know, with the paisley, but, um, and, uh, as far as the, the, um, our improvements here, the, the door, we got the engineer drawing for the, the frame to go around the door. It was not.
Now, just what we're talking about, that's the, the last entrance to the hangar?
Yeah, yeah, the new door that we need to replace. I had to send the drawings back because the cost of the way it was designed was way more than the door was gonna be. I mean, it was nine thousand dollars just for the materials. So, I'm waiting for the engineers to get the final drawing back so we can start that frame. And it won't take that long to get it up once we get that, but it just wasn't something we could put it in legend and, uh, and be able to look for, and there really isn't any reason, it was so overbuilt that it was, it, it just wasn't a good, uh, cost savings and all to, to go that direction, so. Hopefully, this week, supposed to wind up this week, from the month, should have the final drawings back so that we can get the materials and get anything rolling for that door. Shower, shower's up, we've got, we're in the process right now of doing the detail work in the flooring, the shower room. So that's, that's all, hopefully within the next two weeks, we'll be done with that. And then, then we'll, we'll finish moving the rest of the office stuff upstairs and, and get all that wrapped up here. This, this is the time of year where it's slow enough, even in the shop, that we can, we can juggle around and, and make all that happen, so. I'd say probably by March, we should have everything done.
On the shower, is that for lounge, or is the shower men's or women's restroom?
It's a shower, it's a, it's a, a shower in between the, the men's and the women's restroom, for a public, a public shower, so that we can, they can come in from, when they go camping out in the desert and stuff, and they'll have a place to wash off and, and even rest in that bathroom, so.
Earlier years ago, you had a concept of maybe some outdoor landscaping and utilization benches, tables, anything? Are you just still on the table?
Yeah, we're just still on the table, yeah, yeah, for sure. We just, between the, uh, Connect Five grant and the runway improvements and all that stuff, that took up a lot of time this summer, so we didn't get a chance to, to do much outside, so, but that's still something that we're, we're shooting to do. We just, uh, we just haven't quite, quite that far yet.
That, that add a little touch to the place.
Yeah, yeah, that's, you know, we're, hopefully, between that and getting the, getting the parking lot and stuff out front so that front entrance is all fresh pavement and everything, could get addressed up, that would be pretty, I mean, welcoming, people coming in, so, that's the plan anyhow.
So, are we a couple of years away from getting another FAA grant? And isn't it every two years that we start building on the FAA dollars?
Well, every year we get, it's a hundred and fifty thousand each year, so it builds up.
Of, of, yeah, five hundred thousand.
It's, uh, six hundred and six, yeah, I don't know, just, uh, just over six hundred thousand for three-year period, so.
So, I guess where I'm going with that is, um, our condition is the pavement airport surface, and when was it, when was the last time this slurry sealed? I sure hate to lose that infrastructure, it might be something we want to look at there, because it's been, right, fifteen years since that was about fourteen, maybe fifteen years since that was, uh, taken over from the state and became county ownership. And I don't know if it's been sealed in that amount of time or not.
Yeah, I don't know if it has, it's actually really good condition. I mean, I've driven down that quite a few times, just checked these out, and the pavement's in good condition. The problem is right now is that airport's not eligible for FAA funding. They don't consider that, uh, because of its rating and the fact that there's no facilities there, so the FAA will not fund that at all, so that's, uh, that's something we've gotta work through, and I've asked, they've had a couple of engineer changes this year as far as, uh, people, so I've, we've got a clear answer as to what we need to do to make it eligible.
So, if, if, if they have a Connect Oregon Seven next year, something might, if, if it's needed, something might wanna consider it.
That would be something we could do with that, yeah.
Also, the state used to have a program where they located around the state, address, and it's where Oregon's up. Has that, that program went away for a while, is it back on the table again?
It, it is, but it's still, like last year, we were supposed to get all of our taxiways slurred here, and because of budget issues, they weren't able to do that. They only gave us enough to repair the worst of the cracks, and that was it, so it's still just kind of a limbo there as far as, um, they're, they're allotting money, but we're not necessarily getting that awarded to us, so. Uh, whatever they end up with at the end of the season is what we end up, you know, giving a lot of smart thought about.
Or there's any passage of the, the transportation plan, I know they, it had a lot to do with rail and airports and so forth, so maybe the state will have, maybe will qualify.
Yeah.
With the state.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get something there, and I have not heard yet, but the state didn't have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that they were coming out with, um, when we were, was it October? We went up to, to the OML conference and they had a, a grant, they said it was gonna become available, but they hadn't announced it yet, and they said they'd email us as soon as the announcement came about, so if we get that, that's another, another grant that would be very helpful for infrastructure.
They, that would give you a date on the Connect Oregon Six when you go before the mode in Portland, yeah?
No, I don't have the date yet, so. But, um, Rains was talking with, uh, Jeff Cane, and they said sometime in February we should know, or before February we should know when we're gonna be going up there to give the presentation.
Yeah, it's almost February, it should be nice if they give you a date so you can plan.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll keep on, I'll, I'll call again before long and see where, where it's at and make sure that we're not getting flunked out of the loop.
No, we're on the list, we just, I wish they'd give dates a little bit further out for you guys to have to schedule your time.
Yeah, that we could prepare for it a little better, huh, yeah. Yeah.
Anything else for us?
Trying to think, um, if there's anything else that is going on out there, I mean, for services.
Maybe a little update on hangers and potential new customers or anything, I don't, I know there's been some interest and there's one or two that may be for sale or anything, and.
Yeah.
Can you give us any kind of update on the hangers or availability of hangers?
Yeah, we do have two hangers right now, that, uh, two of the tenants have passed away, so they're up and they're, they're both for sale right now. One of them has gotten aircraft in it already, and the other one is being looked at by a couple different people, um, to purchase. So, if the one purchase comes through, it could be one to two more airplanes, they say, will be on the field.
I'd heard rumors a little bit of that, but that, that's good news.
Yeah, yeah, so that's all, as soon as I hear from the owners as far as what's really happening there, we can give you more update, but that's kind of where that's at.
Beautiful.
Um, the, the new construction, uh, of new hangers, we've had a little bit of talk early on in the year, but we haven't had, you know, last year, but since then, there hasn't been a whole lot, nobody's advanced on that, so hopefully this hill this spring, we'll, we'll get a little bit more there.
I think there might be more interest as people see our new improvements, you know, continued improvements and, and, uh,
Yeah.
the other ones that'll become, I mean, it's just gonna be a real nice airport.
Yeah, yeah, but by two thousand eighteen, we shouldn't want them much as far as the infrastructure goes with the actual functionality of the airport, it's, I mean, it'll be in great shape for next fifteen years or so, so.
Well, I'd like, Tom, and it's not a priority at all 'cause it's more cosmetic, but some, you know, sometime in the future, if we can look at that roof on the, the main hangar, you know, for, if it's something we could paint and put like Cannon Airport or whatever, 'cause that, you know, when you're entering with those new gates and with the new parking area, you're talking about all the other trees, boy, that'd just.
Yeah.
Really make it pop, so.
We might try to, we might, Rusty Kid was up there now.
Exactly, yeah.
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 What about the Forest Service?
Oh, the Forest Service, we had a meeting, um, last week.
Be careful what you say, you're right behind me.
They're right behind me. Well, the, the seat base, they're looking at, at doing some upgrades to the seat base right now. So that's, um, just something that's in the works, we don't have any real details other than they came out with an engineer and are looking at a plan to, to renew the seat base to accommodate three aircraft full-time just in that area, because their, last year, last couple years, they've had to tie down, down by the, the FDO there, and they're wanting to try to get that to where that's, you know, so self-sustained down there, they don't have to worry about if they need to park four or five aircraft, they got roof and doubles, so. So that meeting was last week, and, uh, hopefully we'll see something before too late this spring on that, get an answer. Kind of what we're looking at is hopefully when they, when they get their, uh, drawings together and stuff, we can kind of incorporate some of the improvements we're doing to taxiways along with that, so we can, you know, kind of share with everybody there and be able to have a, a real functional facility and do what needs to be done for them as well as support the, the rest of the airport, so.
That's great.
That's, uh, but.
I just, when I go back to Connect Oregon, you say we're ninety-five percent done, or they hold it, usually until it's finalized, they'll hold on to the payment, so.
Yeah.
It's a reimbursement, so that'll be done before the end of the year, so if you have time to get that reimbursement before July.
Yeah, and I talked to Rains with W H Pacific, and, and he reassured me that that wouldn't be causing, uh, a lack of payment at all, that they could close it out without an issue, and then just come back and, and get that striping done without putting a hole in it, so. Yep.
Good. The electric and plumbing and everything's good working well?
It seems to be doing good right now, don't jinx it. No, it seems to be doing all right. We, uh, managed to patch a couple pipes, but this year, this summer, actually, with that kind of stuff, we've been good. It's just a little bit long, so.
When you start patching a patch, that's when they do the rest of it.
Yeah, no doubt. And, um, oh, and, um, uh, Michael's Electric, they were here, you know, for a couple months, and then, uh, Bonneville Power flew in, they just finished their final inspection on everything this last week. So, they'll, they said there may be two more days if they come in, and that's good because that still helps our jet fuel sales and stuff during the winter, if they're coming in and flying in out and buying, buying fuel and parking helicopter and hangers, so that's a little bit, a little something going on during the winter there, sound like maybe one more season of that before, uh, before they're done with all the power and things.
And for the sake of the audience, that's the power, long-term power line that comes across Eastern Lake County in the Hightown area that they're refurbishing that power line?
Yeah, yeah, correct, yeah, they got all their maintenance equipment and stuff stored out of the aircraft, uh, out of the airport, at least in a little land the last couple summers, so, yeah, so that's all, that went well this year.
Anything that we had in town, put their tower there?
Well, yeah, they, they, yeah, they run them up over the thirty-foot mark, so we had to tell them to either put a flag on top and if you're gonna have them up, buy a flag and put on them, or, or do that maintenance somewhere else, so.
Flag up there with service of insight?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. But now that was, yep, no, that's all going well. I think for the winter, we're doing good right now, we're just gonna wrap up the projects that we got that we've been trying to catch up with, and, uh, hopefully this spring we'll be all set, ready to go with the, the Connect Six grant and start rolling on getting that tower and everything in place for the beacon.
Now, that's a, Connect Six is a grant application, and we, do we have to fill, or do we have to roll the bill?
Well, they accepted the, the grant, so now we just have to, we're trying to, we have to go present ourselves, that's what we're talking about with, with Brad there, we'll have to go to Portland, present the, the project, and then wait for our placing, and see where we place as far as they're waiting on. From what I understand, there's nineteen projects in the Eastern Oregon region?
Airport intended.
Airport or, or transportation related.
In, in Region Four, I, I'm trying to remember back, I think it's for.
Oh, they're.
Aviation projects.
Just, yeah, aviation.
Yeah, in Region Four, they'll go before the modes, and then after they go through the modes, modes will rank it, they'll come to us as the act, we'll rank it as that, and then I'll.
Yeah, the main area of mission.
Very, many of, of transportation, then I'll go to the super act, and we'll re-rank them along with all of Region Four. And we go to the final act, I won't, they'll remove me from the final act because of the conflict of interest, the rules have changed, but I'll be in the audience, and they'll just still push things forward. Um, there's only thirty million dollars across the state of Oregon for all regions this year, that's about four point four million per Region Four, um, it's gonna be tough this year, it's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
This project is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project roughly, or two.
Yeah.
Over two-hundred thousand, relatively small, but depends on where the modes rate it. I think for it's a, it's a carry-on, it's a, um, following the process of the project, the Connect Five, that this is the next part of it, has a good chance, but they gotta hammer it at the mode, get the upper ranking at the end. Several years ago, a couple of pilots mentioned about need a windsock out closer to the runway itself, is that?
That was addressed with the Connect Five, there's actually three windsocks now, there's one in the center that's lit, so it's twenty-four, seven, that's visible, and then one on each end of the runway so that they can see, 'cause with our runway especially, there's a lot of crazy wind, it may be, you know, coming out of the south, but on the north end of the runway, you've got winds more on the exactly opposite, so those three socks are pretty important out there to know exactly what's going on, so that's, yep, that's all taken care of, and there's a segmented circle around the, the center sock, which is basically a visible compass from the air, um, that's set up so they can see where the sock is, what, what degree of the compass that sock is pointing at, so they know what, uh, you know, decision to make there for them, so.
Yep.
We're all taken care of.
And going to our page, you don't continually report this in the, in the, the, the train, the thing out there, is it?
Yeah, the Tetra Heaton?
Tetra Heaton.
Yeah.
You need to get that function in, in there someday.
Yeah, yeah, someday it would be nice, yeah.
Anything else for us? Mission. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, that, that was excellent.
Thanks for waiting in there, so, Dave.
He had a lot of control.
Uh, next time out at ten o'clock, so we'll hold off and go through the other things. Hannah, going up on budget officer and calendar approval.
We, we came to see if we could support or, or listen to what Tom had to say there, and if you're interested, had interest in what our, uh, objectives and plans were at concert there, that's what we came, or, you know, let's see if those can happen.
This is pretty straightforward. Anything to add to what Tom had said?
Um, just in short, brief, I guess, some of our plans that he spoke of with the initial meeting this last week was to ensure that our design work was done in a time and fashion that complemented the work that the county's trying to do out there. You know, it makes best interest for us, also do it at the same time that the county's trying to do some of the work there, and we have our own competitive process for the overall, um, completion of that work, but at least the design right now is, the best time to do that is at the same time as the design, more than your infrastructure going at the airport, so, anyhow.
Now, it sounds great.
And you guys need to eventually get to know Mr. Rob Allen here, who is our new deputy fire staff building, behind the position that Barry Schulenberg vacated when he got the fire staff job, so.
Rob, what was his last name?
Allen.
Allen.
Mm-hmm.
They had it all again?
Correct.
So, this is in detail right now, or?
No, this is permanently filled, has our fuels in it, fuels playing.
Just moved down from Alaska, and I'm enjoying the warm winter. Although it's doing the same thing at Fairbanks right now, it's warm and raining.
Yeah.
Which is weird.
Definitely welcome to Lake County.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for that.
Okay. We were hoping to hold your open telelunch and you could lie or something.
Was it, was it our turn?
See ya.
We'll catch you at the restaurant at twelve.
And on budget officer appointment and calendar approval?
Yes.
The first thing is probably appoint the budget officer. General?
Yeah, we got that on, yep, we've got, um.
Any discussions?
I assume the current budget officer's willing to.
I am, yes.
Continue in that role.
We like that, but it is up to your discretion, so it's up to you.
Will. We'll show up discretion tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
But we've done a fine job in the past and you're the most likely person in my booking.
You also have the draft budget calendar in front of you, with the target dates for our schedule. I think you've seen this before, I've asked for comments, I've also sent it to managers and our budget committee people, and I don't have any conflicts at this time, but that doesn't mean that someone looks a little bit closely coming up and then discovers a conflict, so.
Check them out, hand it down to Parker, says calendar now.
Sounds great. Right now, the budget meetings are scheduled for the last Wednesday and Friday in April. Jay's department really appreciates having that Wednesday, Friday, the evening time, it's nice to have the day between it caught up with work, ten minutes and things like that, so we're trying to maintain that meeting schedule.
Now, I see five thirty, two thousand sixteen, that's a, five thirty, there's a deadline on the day, public hearing, thank you. We've, there are normal scheduled meetings, too, there's all the public meetings.
I think that's the Tuesday, um.
Well, February sixteen, so there's.
Uh, I'm down at their.
May thirtieth.
Uh, five thirty, two thousand sixteen, public hearing, click view. That's Monday on the holiday.
So what is that? So it should be six one and six two?
No.
No, five thirty one.
Five thirty one.
Five thirty one.
Good catch.
And then the following day, it'd be six one for why?
Okay.
So, Anne, can you explain again why, I mean, the fifteenth is, I guess that's our last regular meeting?
Correct.
Of the fiscal year, so. Do we ever run any problems with having it a couple of weeks before the end of the fiscal year?
I don't see it as a problem, usually our information is, uh, okay at that point in time, and the budget is just a plan, it's not an exact, so it's okay that modifications are still made in the budget during the actual fiscal year, so that's, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, in the past, there was always something with the assessor's office getting something approved.
Their, to get their, um, A and T grant into the state is May first, they can go off of, uh, best information at that time as well, they have some leeway of how much that information can change before they have to resubmit that A and T grant, we've never had an issue with that grant either, even when we have meetings after May first, so.
Well, tomorrow we'll approve the budget officer's decision, and the budget calendar.
And I'll change that date, May thirty first.
Just like I have a birthday calendar.
Thanks, sir.
The next item is the Oregon liquor control commission license. And I had a, I had the, this person come in last week, he traveled all the way here, I went ahead and signed it, we got to talk to the sheriff, signed it, so this will be a ratification tomorrow, the liquor license, the sheriff had no problems with it. And that is for the Fort Rock general store.
Yep.
And, they, they changed ownership, and that's why they need.
Yeah.
Actually nothing new as far as new leadership, it's, uh, yeah, ownership change. Ownership change, yeah, that's sort of interesting, the guy's new to the area, so he drove back to, uh, um,
That's sort of interesting, the guy is new to the area, so he drove back to Bear Flat Road, came across that way to get to Lakeview, so I think it took a little longer, I said, yeah, from crime look to here, it's only ninety-six miles, I said, it's been a long trip to get back there.
And next one, VFW refocusable license for use ratification, I haven't had a chance to look it up yet.
This is just for the VFW van, they have requested to park the van on county property, it's just the agreement.
To park it over here?
Correct.
And that, I'm familiar with that to some extent, they have vandalism where they have it now, and shit like that, that's a most confusing type of reason. That one also, I signed it, legal counsel was previewed at the D's, took care of all that, get everything checked into it, Mr. Enger was hurried to have it done, signed it last week, so that's another ratification, Mr. Turner.
Commission, well, you're competing heavily with my history of ratification.
Well, if you would have been here, sir, you would have had your name on it. And like, the subject, as far as your audience on the camera, is VFW lack to park at Pan, over in County Park, therefore better security.
Yep.
Whenever you're dealing with the, I guess be the fed site, they want everything.
Security.
Yep.
They wanted certain.
Is this the second or the third agreement we've signed?
This is the third one.
Just trying to let them allow us to park it.
Park a van.
In a public parking area, it's interesting.
I wonder as time goes on, if it might work downward, have the developed site for our evidence room that may change, but anyway, in that enclosed fence area for. Get to depart down there, where it really is secure, you know, we're gonna have security cameras, and, well, for now, you know, it's probably, nothing's up and running as far as security cameras, but just in the future, because this parking lot's gonna get a little tight, I argue.
And the, next item is proclamation, school choice week.
This request came back in November, and we received a letter and mail asking that we're going to recognize, let's see what it is. January twenty-fourth through the thirtieth as school choice week, recognizing charter schools, private schools, home school, all schools.
Jimmy, if, if we do this proclamation tomorrow, will it still get in paper?
We can even print the proclamation as is too, if that's preferable, does that make sense?
I'm good here, if they, if they.
They, you can take this proclamation and print it as soon as it is.
And that'd be in next week's paper?
Mm-hmm.
Can I get your psych copy tomorrow, is that soon enough?
Yep.
Well, this board is very, very supportive of education of our youth, that's our next proclamation, that'll take our place, so I would say, yes, print it.
Yeah, if we wanna vary from the agenda and do the proclamation today, and then that way he would definitely.
Denise can pull the draft up, put that properly.
But the big proclamation, information will come here, somebody needs to read it.
Doesn't that be the chairman's, sir?
Uh, my son and accident would not carry all the way through, so I'll let it be the one of you guys have the option. Go ahead, Anne.
Are we gonna make a motion or anything first, or you just want me to read it?
I'll read it, and then we'll.
Okay. For the board of Lake County Commissioners in the matter of proclaiming January twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, school choice week in Lake County Oregon. Whereas all children in Lake County should have access to high-quality education, as to, to the, have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Lake County recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students in Lake County to be successful adults, and. Whereas Lake County is home to a multitude of high-quality, traditional public schools, public charter schools, and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, the economy, but also enhances the vibrance of our community, and whereas Lake County has many high-quality teaching professionals in traditional public schools, public charter schools, and non-public schools who are committed to educating our children, and whereas. School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options, now therefore be, be it proclaimed by the Lake County Board Commissioners that January twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, has school choice week in Lake County. We encourage all Lake County citizens to join in this observance and to support the youth of our community, done and dated this perhaps nineteenth day of January, two thousand sixteen.
I'll change that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation as written.
And I'll say a motion, any other discussion? Now, to reiterate that, the board of commissioners, various schools, we have some excellent schools, Northlake, Baystate, Lakeview, uh, heademental schools, Alabazie, Adele, Union, and also like to, also acknowledge New Pan Creek, even though this school is on the California side of the state line, it's still addressed to our children in, in Lake County. And also many of our pre-school, we need more of those, but we begin to gain a few more of those as time goes by. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mars appears. Take that off with Mars, James.
Any department updates?
Nobody here. No, it's okay with the other two commissioners, I'd like to take a recess until ten o'clock, unless you wanna cover, lay us on updates at this time.
Uh, you guys, one thing we probably ought to discuss real fast, it's very light agenda tomorrow, we need legal counsel to be here tomorrow, and, hey, I guess maybe have Denise check and see on legal updates and executive session. Other than that, I don't see a need for any of that.
No, I agree.
Let's go ahead and cover, before we take a break, lay us on updates.
Okay, I got a pair of you, I'll, I'll start off, if that's all right for you guys.
You bet.
Well, the depredation committee is moving forward, tomorrow I'll have the first meeting in afternoon with the ones that have been appointed, we'll be working towards looking to appoint two business, businesses, representatives, and we're going to look at the grant, just take a look at it, because we have to have everything established before we can apply for a grant. Denise has been pulling together a lot of information, I've got to her, she's been coordinating, getting the meeting together, tomorrow I'll have my first meeting, pause, we're not able to make it, he's got a conflict, he's an out-of-person, but he gave me quite a bit of information to bring forward. We, there is a good potential for OR twenty-five to possibly found a mate in Lake County, so we're going to continue to see more and more wolves in Lake County, OR twenty-eight is still coming into Lake County, also both of those are collared wolves. So, just let you guys know that I'll be working on that tomorrow afternoon. Uh, next thing, Connect Oregon Six, talked a little bit about that this morning, that, that's gonna be quite a competitive process this year, there's quite a few dollars asked for from Region Four. So hopefully the projects that Lake County has will do really good ranking at the mode level, maybe if we could get particularly the railroad one on Red Rock, if it could be up there, would be great if it could be number one, and maybe leverage some of those other dollars that's not distributed out through the process of, of the different acts, the extra dollars above and beyond. On February the twelfth is our regular act meeting, it's in Clamour Falls at KCC, it'll be a very short act meeting, we'll just sort of accept the minutes.
What day is that?
Uh, February twelfth, that is whenever the Oregon governor, or it's the governor's transportation vision panel will be there, so our act meeting will be very short, and then we will go into the meeting with the governor's transportation vision panel, and that's our chance to try to naturally promote, our number one priority is ninety-seven, our, our next priority is one forty east, try to get there. Gives us an opportunity to work with this vision panel to try to make sure that they understand our.
Is this a full act?
This is a full act meeting, and the day before that, I have a meeting with the regional solutions team in Clamour that day, I'm trying to set up some networking time that afternoon or that evening with the governor's vision panel teams, so maybe I can do a little networking away from just the standard meeting time. Uh, the next meeting that we're all, we all can go to is the natural gas meeting on the ninth here in Lakeview, it'll be at the town hall, I believe it's at ten thirty that morning, ten or ten thirty. The last one I did, it made it part of it, there's still a lot of discussion trying to find the dollars to do a feasibility study as the natural gas gets down to the Chattermost Road. I haven't put a lot of absolute thought into that feasibility study, but where the county through Red Rock will have the extra capacity, that feasibility study needs to be sort of the direction that the county would like to look at that, and put it forward. I don't think we ought to be in the business of distributing natural gas, but we ought, the feasibility study should look at whether it's municipality, the town could possibly do it, we could, a visitor or somebody like that did it there, or if the county did it. If we do push and find the dollars for a feasibility study, we need to make sure that we look at all, all options on that, so any thoughts on that at all?
Well, I know it's on down the road, the hell of a work, and, and I agree with you, I don't think we wanna get in the distribution business, but, and the town is a likely player, and have the, in the, this extra capacity, the county's the only one that wanna participate, making sure we get natural gas beyond the, from this Red Rock wildfire point. So exactly how the, the vision now would work for Red Rock and Lake County, and got it to that point, and, and have ownership of it. Would you rather talk about that at another time?
Well, I, the, no, as, as we work on this, trying to do a feasibility study, the county is the one that's investing into the line, so if there's a feasibility study, we have to look at the way we're to recoup our less than that cost for pay for that extra capacity, that needs to be part of the studies, and there, there's just a lot, lot of unanswered questions, so if we find the money to do this feasibility study, it really needs to be, we have to be at the table, the county has to be a, a driving part of that. A way to recoup our, our investment by a lot, by a reduced amount of community service fees, so I welcome all three of us to make it to that meeting, because we're stronger as a full team than just individuals, so. Along with that, Ken had reported on that, the, all the committee, he, he's continued to work on that, and so we're, we're trying to get the natural gas every place we can. Couple other things real fast, I look forward to both of you, legal counsel and Denise, the information I've gotten from the Smit Museum, on the Smit Museum, that's continuing to go forward sometime in May is whenever the state DAR will be doing their, their vote, their decision-making, as that, our last going on. In conjunction with that, the state DAR, they're working with their legal counsel, working with the process it would take to, or to build, acquire that building, and parts of it, so that's, so far it's working very good for that to continue to go forward. I, I met with the local, the Lake County Museum, we went over there, and went through their weekly check in the Smit Museum, it's a good partnership for that.
And might touch a little bit on the birds, the Smit, they have a problem sustaining blow as far as financial and so forth, and the whole emphasis behind this is to secure the longevity of that Smit Museum.
I guess I didn't understand, or didn't hear the first part that you talked about, the tight actual site?
The, currently the Smit Museum been having a hard time financially sustaining that because of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, same with our museum too, financially, of course, it's an endowment fund, and they're only able to use that interest off that endowment, and it's always a challenge to keep everything operating. So, that, that we would be taking over the responsibility of that, the town of Lakeview contributes a small amount now, if Connect Or, or not Connect, but if Red Rock, if I start paying the community service fee to build it, we'll have that money coming in, this'll take commitment, as we talked about before, from the board of commissioners through our budget time, to be able to keep that up and operational. The museum board, Lake County Museum Board, doesn't see a whole lot of extra costs as far as personnel costs, your own dump on your power, and your water, and your sewer, and, and those types of things, and maintenance, or a piece of maintenance too, but the curator should be able to just basically flip the sign on one, walk across with the people to, leave the sign up, that we're at the museum stop right there, and with the amount of people using the museum, it should work fine. So, yes, it'll be more costs, but I think we'll.
The biggest thing is keeping that museum.
Keeping it here, otherwise much of the items would be shipped out, if the DAR had to close it themselves. Yep. The only other thing real fast, I guess, is it's, we're, the tail end of the third year, union negotiations will start here in, I believe the first part of March is whenever we'll be starting our first office set down, with our first discussion with the union. So, I really encourage both of you to look over both, both contracts, one for the correction site upstairs, road deputies and jailers, and in the general fund court outside, if there's any language or any of those contracts that you guys are aware of, they give the legal counsel, or to me, or Jay, so that will start in March.
Can we get fresh copies of those?
Yep.
Um, are they gonna be open meetings, are they gonna be courts?
We haven't had that discussion yet, we have, the last time we opted have them open, so that the, any negotiations, the public can come in, that, this, any of the negotiations, I would say that would probably be quiet to do that, yeah.
Yep. Just add back on, on the book committee, you mentioned OR twenty-five and OR twenty-eight, just for the audience, OR twenty-five is one that kind of center, kind of northwest of By, but it stands in Lake County some, OR twenty, twenty-eight is the female that's in Fort Rock, so what I heard, but they also picked up on the trail cam, and another wolf in the same vicinity as OR twenty-eight.
Yeah, it's not a collared wolf that they've linked to make, or.
Yeah.
It could be. I, I think there's a lot more here than what we know, because of, the hunters are starting to pick them up on the trail cams, you don't see a wolf in the wild very often, but the trail cameras seem to pick them up.
When new avenues of detection comes about, it's amazing what we detect.
Yeah, that's right, so that pretty much gets me to just give an update on quite a few things going on, but it took a lot of the time to come out for a break, sorry.
So, Commissioner, if you wanna have a break first, I've got a handful of items, so I brought this up.
Well, let's take it, our next time out is ten o'clock, we're gonna take a break until ten. Our next time Adam is ten o'clock, we're going to take a break until ten.
Do you need some of that, am I writing down everything?
Right.
For audience on the camera, what I have for Aztec is the contracted services we have for IT system there.
Well, the kind of the agenda that I was asked to to put together here or information to cover was the projects that we completed in fiscal year 2015. Or actually to the end of 2015. It was. So, we did get mental with mental health. They got a new server, new PCs.
Remote backup.
Yeah. Public health, we did the same thing. They got a new server, new PCs. We set up a remote backup and we established a connection to the county. And the roads department, they have a new server and backup system, but we do not install that as of yet.
I've implemented it. There's gonna be a lot of work to preliminary work before we finish you the new server there. They're gonna go through the same thing public health went through and we're gonna have to establish a connection to here before we can get that installed.
Right.
So that's what's, that's what we're waiting for there is to start the process of implementing the the connection to the county.
Yeah, I believe we got a switch for them also. Yeah. That'll probably be done this, in the current fiscal year, which means before June 30. The annex at Christmas Valley, we have a new switch. We have a Buffalo backup system up there which we implemented. And then moving on to, oh yeah, there's cameras up there too.
Okay. To the rest of country boys, new switch.
Oh, okay. A switch is just a box about the A big fits in the rack and it allows the communications between the county here and the annex up there. It'll also power cameras and allow the feedback from the cameras to communicate back here. Does that make sense? Okay.
Just let you know the cameras are working well. Dave's sitting back there, but we did have somebody drive into the annex a week and a half ago. They pulled up the pictures on the camera and very nice to be able to do that. Showed the accident, showed everything, so it's working out.
Yeah, I saw that video and I think they need to work on their clutch. Sorry. I'll be quiet though.
Maybe have some backup guards out.
Well, I was gonna say.
They're on their way.
That was the problem with, that's the problem with cameras, they don't stop people's driving.
No.
Nothing you capture.
They sure don't. But it's nice to have that there so that we're able to capture that. See what really happens.
Yeah, you can't prevent, but it can give a history of what transpired.
Exactly. That's cool. With the sheriff, we did a lot of things. They got new roughbooks which are in their vehicles.
Explain roughbook.
Okay, a roughbook is a laptop that is built. I'd say Ford tough, but I'm a Ford guy. But if you drop it on the floor, you can pick it up, it'll fire up. It's good till maybe 20 below. It's waterproof, I think up to three feet. There's a lot of things that go into a roughbook and and the reason is, we get those is because we're dealing with sheriff's deputies.
Not that.
Not that they're fumbling or anything, but they'll be out there in the elements documenting accidents. It could be raining or snowing and very cold and they're bringing them in and out. So, that's why we run with roughbooks.
Do those roughbooks have cameras?
Yes, they do.
They have built-in cameras, built-in GPS sensors into them. They do a lot, built-in wireless connectivity through Verizon towers. So, all the internet is done through Verizon. And so, there's, there's a lot going on in those laptops. They're very neat.
And one of the biggest benefits of them having their laptop with them is that they can get all the stuff recorded, documented right there as opposed to driving back to the office to do it.
Exactly.
Which that might be the burden to someplace else.
Correct, and we, we also have them secured. They're encrypted in, in a sense anyway, so they are very secure. And the way it's set up, we do meet the, the federal requirements, CEGIS requirements, so.
Are there dead spots where the?
The only dead spot they would have is where there's a cell, cellphone dead spot. And that's just something you're gonna battle unless you put up your own add tamens.
But if they type things in and then the dead spot wants to drive to someplace, then it's chaotic.
It'll automatically update it though.
Yeah.
And the, the police vehicles are also outfitted with cellphone boosters as well. And so, it does help with the signal. So, they do, they, there's a couple dead spots that I've heard about, but pretty much they have entire 4G coverage no matter where they go.
North on Alphord, Green Mountain, that area, I think.
Might go, might go out up there.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's pretty cool. I would say very progressive for the sheriff's department, very good for them. The other thing they did is we helped them with their EIS installing the software installed here for not just the vehicles and the sheriff's side, but also for the jail.
Also, another act, now, EIS is an environmental impact statement.
Uh, no. EIS is a software company that provides software for sheriff's departments. How's that? Yeah, I don't wanna get into the environmental thing. We also established a secure, stable connection to dispatch. 911 plus 911, so we have a connection there. They also have a new server and of course, they have new switches for communications. And part of the reason was to be, they get audited about every other year by the Oregon State Police, which is doing it in behalf of the FBI. And we have certain federal requirements that they have to meet. So, some of the things that we did this year with sheriff's department bring them into compliance with the federal CEGIS requirements. So, we're on the right path here. We're real close to being fully compliant, so the next audit should do very well for the sheriff. We did a data security plan here at the county. We generated a plan, we trained employees, we implemented network tracking. On that note, if you remember a couple of years ago, somebody, whether inadvertently or whatever, downloaded a very bad virus on our network. And it took us about three days to clean it up and we had to restore files. We just had that happen yesterday for a client event who is very secure because it's a medical facility.
That was a client event, not related to Lake County?
Not related to Lake County, but it's ringing us up because we wanna send out an email today to everybody in the county warning them not, if they don't know who that email is from or why they got it, please delete it. If you open that email, it's going to ask you to go to a link. If you go to that link, it'll automatically download this virus. That user will have no concept of what just happened. They'll have no idea because they're in clothes and hide it self. And we'll have about two or three days before it pops up on somebody's computer whoever did this. And we'll tell them that it's 500 bucks to unencrypt the file, pay this amount of Bitcoin. We've got less than 50% chance they'll send us the unencryption. Now, with that said, we have network tracking, so we will know immediately who did it. We will know immediately what happened, but that doesn't stop the virus from getting on our network. And you say, well, gee, Brad, how come you haven't fixed that? Well, I would say the same thing to the Department of Defense, Target, Wells Fargo. All of these giant corporations and the government, including the IRS, have all gotten hacked and they've all gotten viruses. When a user does something like that, it's very hard for us to stop that. And we know that here at the county, I just wanted to send out an email saying, there's a new one out.
New virus.
Yeah, it's called, instead of Crypto Locker, it's called Crypto Wall, C-R-Y-P-T-O Wall. And there's a new version. There was a 3.0 version, which we're hoping that our client event has, that we can go back and spend a few days cleaning it all up and encrypt the files ourselves. Because it will go to your network server, it'll go to your backups, it'll go everywhere.
Is that the email that's gonna come from Josh from the administration?
Yeah, or you, or however you would like to do that. Yeah, maybe we can put together an email, you can review it before we send it out. The latest version that came out on last Thursday is Crypto Wall 4.0. There is no encryption for it at this point. So, that's why I wanna make darn sure that we alert everybody. If you don't recognize that email, you don't know what it is, please delete it immediately.
Also, years ago, we just had one come through by a person that we do know. Somebody else had captured his, it was the person on Skowet Board of Directors. But it came from him, but the topic was odd and that's what triggered us to go.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be crazy. The cool thing is, is here we will know exactly what happened because we have network tracking. And it will help us clean it before it gets too bad, before it spreads too far in the network. However, it's really almost impossible to stop somebody from doing something. I won't, I won't say, okay, dumb or naive, I guess would be a better term. They don't know what they're doing inadvertently, they go ahead and download that virus.
That's a good one for you to write whatever you're. So, let me hijack this person's email so it pops up as being somebody we know. It was the attachment that was included.
That will kill you, yeah. So, if you don't understand what it is, please delete it. Okay, moving along, the next thing we did was fairgrounds. We have a remote backup set up for the fairgrounds. Then we have this project called a Remodel. And we did the wiring layout, we set up the sound system. Did install new switches. We helped move systems and we're still working on some, wherever cleanup there is. Anytime you do a project of this magnitude on the tech side, it's always a fun, joyous experience. And so, overall, I think it went pretty well.
And we're talking about the remodel this way?
Yes.
Just this one for 2015, but you know, I do actually have a lot we're all working on. We just got done with the assessor's office, moving all their equipment and now we've been working with sheriff Michaeler and also working with Jake to develop a plan for their, their new area back there.
Yeah. And then I guess we may.
From my point of view, it's been pretty darn good because I have almost like zero complaints or anything come along. So, thank you very much. It's been very good.
So, so the only difference in Dave's here with the new remodel, you know, the other stuff was in place and we made the changes and hooked things up. And down in the old assessor's office and then of course, the sheriff's office, I don't know that we're gonna have the same kind of remodel plan as it was with the contractor putting in the wiring and so forth. So, I don't know if it's important to talk about that today at all, but it's a little different. That's something we really need to lay out and get it right the first time if we can, or at least close. Cause if we don't, that's probably the biggest thing that will cause us grief in that type of a project. Well, I know there's existing wiring because we, you know. And we'll take a look at that, what can we use, but also what are we gonna need? Yeah. Cause this is a little different. Yeah, it is. Yeah, here was, the wiring was pretty easy. We had a drop ceiling, we had all kinds of things worked out in our favor. Even though we did need to go down to the service room and do some runs that way. Overall, I think it went pretty good and that helped a lot.
We're, we're gonna have that all open and everything down there. For it, I don't protect your world at all, but you can be sheriff and corrections. Probably opportunity to put extra lines or extra capacity in there for growth in the future, I would think to be.
I would make sure. It's likely what we did here too. We, we opened this up so if you added more people or added more computers, then we could handle that or more phones.
I'm sure you guys would think of that. If it's all open, you're able to hang the wires there, it's a great opportunity.
Well, when you run it one line, you might as well run one more.
Yeah, the cost is pretty minimal compared to having to do it later.
Yeah, the cost isn't in the cable, it's the, the man time and they could pull two or three just as easy as they could pull one.
Great.
So, we will be ready for that and that will continue running, assuming this year, from the 16. And I will move on to what we're gonna be doing from now and through July. And there's one I left off with two minutes. We're gonna move your Windows 365 email to Government 365 email.
What's the pros and cons of that?
The pros of that is what Microsoft did last year is they said, you know what? We're gonna build a government, specific area of storage and email just for government entities. And we're going to encrypt it and we're gonna meet all the federal and state regulations for all 50 states and for all federal government, which includes ACA, all of those kinds of requirements. We're gonna set them off in their own world. They'll be on servers here in the United States and it will be secure. And so, we were on 365 before they were bright enough to do this. So, now we have to move the county from the business sector to the government sector.
On the government sector, that'll be federal, state, county?
Yes.
Would it also be special districts? I'm thinking hospital right now and school system.
I don't know. They have to, the fun part of this is you have to be approved as a government entity before they let you in. As a county, you will be accepted, no problem. As far as special districts goes, cities, I've done it with a city and work. I did it with a healthcare organization, which was a nonprofit. And they're an organization and they were approved also, but it took like two days longer. But they were approved. So, some of these special districts, like a fire district or something of that nature, they might, they might get approved. Especially if they have data that needs to be secured, that's the key. And so, that's what popped up. Yeah, and we can work with them and help them go through that process because we're Microsoft partners and that's what we do. But yeah, there's a good shot they could be.
As far as pros and cons of it, the reason why we, the main reason for doing this is for the second B on this list here, email encryption. By doing this, we also fulfill our email encryption project that is included in the transfer. So, once we move all of our emails and all of our contacts and everything to the new government side, all emails being sent away from the courthouse will be encrypted emails.
And how we do that is we actually have to write a little program in, within 365. And Microsoft, what they do is they say, okay, we're not saying anything about email encryption until later and I'm sure they'll charge later. Right now, they don't charge. That's something that we found that we can do and we write a program in 365. So, when you send an email, if you want it encrypted in the description, the first word in the description says secure. You just type in secure and then anything after that and in the email and it'll automatically encrypt that email. Now, the encryption system that Microsoft uses is pretty cool because it meets the federal, state standards. Meaning that they have an encryption system where you send emails back and forth with this, with the other entity through their encryption system on both sides. So, if I sent you an email and it was encrypted, you get an email from Brad Brown and it'll say, this is an encrypted email for you to read this email, click this link and then you'll get another email with a password that will allow you to enter into that encrypted area. Read my email and then you can reply and it'll send it back encrypted to me. And that's how it works and it's, instead of having to check boxes and do all that stuff, you type the word secure in the description. As long as it's somewhere in the description and it says secure, it'll secure that email. Now, the people that we're really concerned about using this are your health departments for HIPAA and ACA, which is Affordable Care Act or Obamacare. Sheriff, District Attorney, CEGIS compliant, Veterans Affairs, they have HIPAA information. So, these departments, for them, it is very important. If you have public information going back and forth, you would not use secure. You would just send a regular email. But for them, if they're, have secure data, they can do that. That's one of the reasons we want you in that government site. Besides, we also meet the federal and state requirements when you're there.
And this is a new challenge for the hackers.
It is, and you know, the fun thing is Microsoft's throwing billions of dollars at this government side, making it secure and meeting the requirements.
You say Microsoft is throwing billions of dollars. Actually, I suspect a good part of that is public knowledge.
Yes, yeah, and I'm sure we have tax dollars going there.
So, if somebody secures a government building, they have access to the security?
Now, one of the things we can talk about in the data security plan is putting an email disclaimer at the bottom of your emails. And that's something that you could work with Mr. Bailey on, your legal counsel. But if you look at other counties and cities and their disclaimers, that'll kinda give you a good idea of what we should have on the bottom of that email. And this would be a standard email for all people in the county. There's a few people who may need a special disclaimer, but I'd say 98% of everybody should have the same disclaimer that, you know, if you got this email by error, please delete this information and it's on and on all legal mumble jungle. But you should have it on the bottom and that's something that we would set up pretty well.
But back up to the transition, I, I always ask this question, if I have like 15,000 deleted things, it'll still be that way when we switch over from the 365 to the Government 365? You still just delete them and they just hang out there forever?
No, they're gone. But, oh, wait a minute, let me put it this way. That's a good question because in the business side, if you empty your deleted folder, they're gone after 90 days. In the government side, they never go away. And here's the other question we should have asked, which I didn't explain. Let's say that somebody leaves the county, not that they ever leave because it's such a nice place to work. But if they did leave the county, what would happen is we would go in, disable their account. So, nobody can use that account and then it frees up another 365 license for the new person who replaces them. And in the government version, you never lose any deleted emails. So, if there was a bad email that somebody had received or whatever and they tried to hide it by deleting it, they can't. And all of that history from the time they worked here, we set up their account until they left, all of that information is safe for years and years into the future because this is one of the things we're asked by other counties. Does that go away? Because you have to hang on to that legally and no, it doesn't. Microsoft would keep that forever. So, even if they leave, we still have it and we can go back and get it.
Well, what we've always been told that you gotta keep those deleted ones, when we change over, those deleted ones will go away.
They, they won't go away when you will be, they'll still be there.
They still be there, but they, they go away from our screen as far as being deleted items.
I'm not so sure they will. We'll, we'll look at that when we do it.
Really doesn't matter to me. I just, when you see 15,000 deleted emails there, you know, fill all your junk. I go through every now and then and.
Yeah, you have junk mail. The new thing you'll see is clutter. Clutter, clutter's a pain. Yeah, and you can turn that off if you want to. Okay. Yeah. I'm gonna turn it off. Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna have Josh turn my own.
We can do that.
He can help you clean the clutter in your office. So, all, all these emails go into cyberspace and so, they in turn are causing a lot of the problem, climate change?
On the I file, the change in.
Are we going back to the EIS software discussion? We're not the environmental agency. I think we're okay there. Most of the government, well, a lot of the government 365 email is, is in Washington on servers. Washington State, I think it is. Yeah. The next thing we were gonna work on was folder encryption on laptops, tablets, server PCs. Now, the folder encryption is a, a program that will actually encrypt that particular folder. And that secures it in case somebody hacked the system, was able to get into the system. Or let's say you took your laptop to a conference or an iPad or tablet, whatever it might be, and somebody stole it out of your room. They would not be able to get any data off of it. It would be encrypted. That's where we're headed. Also on the server, if we had a disgruntled employee who went where they weren't supposed to go on a server to where we had secure data, they would not be able to access that data. So, that's something that we're working on and there's a project behind the scenes that we're doing where we're actually organizing and cleaning up where your data goes and how it's stored into a little hierarchy that we can work with. And not that it was bad to begin with, we're just cleaning it up the best we can before we implement this. So, there's a lot of work that goes into this on our side.
And you talked about laptops and tablets, also cellphone, because I get all my email over my cellphone too.
Yeah, and there, there are, this particular program that we're looking at, we'll encrypt phones, both iPhone and Droids. So, if we wanna go that far, we can. That's a discussion we wanna, when we get to that point and figure out how we wanna do that. Cause I played around and wound myself on my phone, so. I was able to get back in, but you gotta be careful. Okay. Enough of my stupidity. The next thing we call is a sheriff backup system. This is something that we haven't done yet. It's a project that we need to do. And whether that happens before July or not, they need their own Buffalo care station and their own software. So, they're totally off of the county network and totally on their private secure network. And this is one of the last pieces to meet that audit, that CEGIS audit that we have coming our way.
Define CEGIS.
CEGIS is a federal standard set forth by the FBI for security. So, and I can't remember the exact.
Criminal justice information system.
Thank you, there we go. Sorry, I didn't have enough Mountain Dew this morning, but we have to, as geeks, we have to become certified at a certain level so we can even work on those computers, which Josh and I, well, all of our guys have that certification and gals. We all have that certification so we can work on sheriff's systems or police systems and keep them secure. We've also been through four audits now, one here with.
Audit by?
The OSP, Oregon State Police, in behalf of the FBI, where we understand these are what the requirements are. And Greg, Greg at the OSP really did work with and so, we've worked with them on this and, and that's where we come up with this information. And there's a document, a book about the A big, that this is what you have to do. Greg helped us narrow it down to, here's the important points that I'm gonna be looking for in the audit and that's what we're trying to meet. We have, I mean, it's taken time. It's taken us a couple of years to get here, but we're closing in on a clean audit and that's where we wanna be. And for an entity this size, that's a big deal because you don't have millions to throw at something like this, which the larger counties do. So, I feel really, really good about where we are here at Lake County.
Brad, back up, back up to the Buffalo, what's our exposure right now about that being a backup and everything?
Our exposure on the Buffalo basically is we have them sectioned off, the sheriff's sectioned off. It would be very difficult for somebody to access that sheriff backup. Number one is we use the Buffalo and we use a backup software called Novastore because it encrypts the data. And there's encryption on the Buffalo and there's encryption on the Novastore software. And so, what we did is we took the Buffalo and we said, okay, this portion of the Buffalo is the backup, the county do it. And the Buffalo is a box about the A big with a bunch of hard drives in it. It plugs right into the network and acts like an extra drive on the. It plugs right into the network and acts like an extra drive on the network. So, we sectioned this side off and said, everybody in the county, we're backing up your files to this side. And then we put a wall up on the other half, and we said, this is where the sheriff's data goes. It's really pretty secure, but it doesn't meet the audit requirements. The audit says sheriff has to be on a total separate system, which we're getting there. When we get this Buffalo in, they have their own Buffalo, their own software, then we meet that requirement.
So, we're, we're being backed up fine now, it's just getting compliance with the.
Exactly, yeah.
Answered my question.
Yeah, and they shouldn't be on the same Buffalo you're on.
Okay.
Then Screen Connect is a program that we use, um, and we need to buy a license to Screen Connect, which I talked to Denise about. Uh, you're using our license, which we've been using for the last three years. The, the county needs its own license, and what this allows us to do is, let's say, we had an issue with one of the deputy's PCs up at the annex. Uh, instead of Josh having to jump in his wonderful car, drive up there, fix it, he can hop on that PC remotely, take over that PC, and actually fix the issue remotely. That's what Screen Connect is. And so, if he had to run to the fairgrounds, he could say, what's going on, hop on that computer real quick and fix it.
So, when a whole phone, no, no, like mentioned, I have a little problem with my thing, you can do it remotely.
You can do it remotely, yeah. Yeah, we, we live on it, uh, for sure. So, we have clients up in Washington, too, and it's like, yeah, right.
It's a whole phone here to depend on my thing.
How, how expensive is the license for that?
I can't remember, I think it's three and a quarter bucks a year, it's a subscription. Uh, but well worth the, well worth the money. So, it's not really expensive, but the capabilities are, are awesome.
Essentially speed up repair comes for each of them that comes in.
Yeah, and it's a lot easier for Josh to sit there at his desk. For us, remotely, if we're helping back up Josh on some issues, we can come in remotely and take over the server, or the PCs, or whatever. And it's a very secure system, and, like I said, we've been using it, we use it at all of our clients.
Well, tech companies use that.
They do.
You'll call a helpline, and they'll wanna take over your.
Exactly, and there's, there are several different products out there. Uh, we chose Screen Connect because it's totally secure. And, uh, it's very easy for us to manage. We talked about the roads department's server implementation, and then KVM solution is one thing that I put down here, it's something we haven't done. What that is, is a little box that would sit in the rack of servers. And we can remote desktop into each of the servers from a PC and see the, and, I don't wanna get too geeky here, but, Josh could sit at his computer at his desk and, and fire up a session on his computer that would connect him to each one of the servers. The problem is, is if that server had a real problem, he would have to go over, unplug, plug, do all this kind of stuff with keyboards and mice and, and displays to try and figure out how he could connect to that server correctly, either power it up or find out what the real issue is with that server. A KVM switch is a little box that sits in the rack. It has a mouse and a keyboard cable that you share between all those servers. So, it'll have one display, one keyboard, one mouse, where he can control whichever server he wants, just by pushing a button. And we'll have them all labeled, so if there's a real issue there, we can get to it.
The incident we had a year or so ago, we had two servers go down at the same time.
That would be very helpful in that situation, very helpful.
Essentially, an easy way to put it, it's a splitter. Um, it splits, it splits one signal into, say, a companion over twenty-five, maybe eight different signals, six signals, um, it's a splitter. So, it allows me to have one station to control as many different things as I want. So, um, and the reason that's beneficial, because you can remote onto a server, but you can't do everything remotely. Some things have to be done physically in front of the machine, uh, moving up for instance.
Yep. So, so, this is a strange question. So, what's our protection if Josh becomes disgruntled?
Hank and I. If you're serious, I guess, yeah.
Everything you talk about, where he has, or whoever would be your employer, would have access to everything we have. So, what's, what's our protection?
Now, that's a good question, so what we do is.
Making him nervous, he's sort of.
What we do is, we have the network, we can track everything that he does on that system. And so, we can look at those reports just as well as he can look at those reports, that's the first thing. Uh, and I could get into specifics, but I won't. Uh, we can track him that way. The other thing we do is we, we, uh, Josh is CGS certified. Now, for him to be CGS certified, uh, he gets fingerprinted, he has a background check done by the FBI, uh, before he gets that certification, and then he has to take the test. Uh, we have a bond which we have to meet, where everybody has to be federally certified, and so, he's under that umbrella. Uh, other than that, that's about the best we can do, other than watch what he does, and.
I don't predict anything, hey, Josh, he's awesome, but.
Well, no, he's got it.
You just think about all this techie stuff and everything, it has to be security all the way through. I mean, somebody could really destroy our.
One example that I have of that is with another client who, another county client, a rather large county client. And they had network tracking software like we have now here at Lake County. They were actively viewing the reports. They found that one of their texts went into a secure data area to view information on a family member, uh, which they shouldn't have done. Uh, within twenty-four hours, that employee was terminated. Now, were they able to stop that person from doing that? No, but they were able to catch him soon enough before there was any real damage done. And I think that's where we're at on this, on this, uh, network tracking. Josh knows that everything he does, we can make a movie of it. If we went to court, so he would have a movie. And my buddy at the FBI said he loves that software, because if you get in front of a jury, and you can show them a movie of what that person was doing, he says it's pretty hard to argue.
Yeah.
And so, Josh knows that we can do that, that's a good incentive for him not to do anything.
And he has the same control. Good point, though.
So, Brad, one item, just for the projects that we were just talking about when we first started in on this year, I just put it down as I have the North End Main Floor remodeled? Because it's not listed on here.
No, I, I didn't know that, I spaced it when I put this together. The other thing that I didn't put on here, and let me put on the, I have a pen here. The other one I didn't put on here, what should be on here, and this is, this is between, uh, Brad and the county, and this is nothing that if you went out.
Say, between Brad and the county, you may use Brad.
Yeah, uh, this is per Brad, not, I would say, from a fairly trusted source. Um, if you went out and searched this on the web, Microsoft will not fess up. Right now, if you have a valid license of Windows Seven Pro, you get, you can download and upgrade to Windows Ten Pro for free, okay? From what I got from Dell, because we're also Dell partners, is that will end July thirty-first of this year. And that was told to me from our, our, uh, marketing manager rep at Dell, that Microsoft told them, hey, you're gonna start charging, um, we're gonna start charging for Windows Ten Pro. My estimate is it'll probably be a hundred and fifty to two hundred bucks a copy. And this is all just per Brad, all right? So, if you went and searched this on the web, you're not gonna see this, this is something that was an inside information from Dell. So, what I'm passing on to our clients is it would behoove you to go ahead and upgrade the computers that we can to Windows Ten Pro before July thirty-first, because we should be saving some money. And I caught it on the web yesterday, is there's a, uh, Microsoft's deal is, on one of the tech pages, is to take over the world with Windows Ten. They are, already have the largest operating system base they've ever had in their history, meaning more people are on Windows Ten than any other version of Windows ever been out there. So, they're pushing it very hard. Um, our thing is, is you could save a lot of money here at the county if you're talking a hundred and fifty to two hundred bucks PC. Now, there's a process that we have to go through. Uh, we have to go to each user and make sure that all, number one, their computer can handle, it meets the requirements for Windows Ten Pro. Uh, we're very lucky, because the standards we have here at the county will meet those requirements. So, the other good side of this is it could save us, or extend the life of that computer another couple of years, because we're on Windows Ten. The other thing, um, which we need to look at is will their software support Windows Ten? So, Helion, for example, with the assessor, they're gonna be Windows Ten compliant, what, mid-February?
From getting major reports.
Yeah, so, we, we have to wait until they're Windows Ten compliant, but when they are, then we can upgrade them, and hopefully it's before July thirty-first. A lot of the other users out there could just go ahead and move to Windows Ten. The other thing is, once we move them to Windows Ten, then we need some training on Windows Ten. So, you're up to speed. I can't tell you the transition from eight to ten, there is no transition, because it acts a lot like Windows Ten. Windows Seven and Ten, there's not a real big difference, but there is a difference. The other thing is, is where do you think Microsoft is pushing all of their research and development on security? On Windows Seven Pro or on Windows Ten? So, Windows Ten is the most secure operating system available from Microsoft today. And so, the actual virus protection and a lot of this stuff is what I call inherent in the operating system. It's not a separate program, it's built in the operating system. So, what I would recommend is that we look at each user, and the users that we can move to Windows Ten, we go ahead and do that before the end of July.
Josh has been working on that.
Yeah, so, I can, uh, because my deadline is very, very short on this, I've already started this. And like Brad said, our first thing is, can the computer handle it? And the answer, pretty much around the whole courthouse, is yes. Um, the standards that Brad defined, all these computers that meets that immediately. Second one, will software work? Um, and I have already started this, and by doing this, I had a spare computer downstairs. Uh, upgraded it to Windows Ten Pro, and then just started installing all of the software that we use. Uh, JGS, uh, all the sheriff stuff, uh, pretty much every single department has their program installed on that computer. The goal of that was to see what's going to work, will that user therefore be qualified to upgrade their personal, or their work computer to Windows Ten? Uh, so far, it has been pretty good. Um, I have not had a single program not work yet. However, there are still, uh, a couple of programs I have not installed. One of those would be the assessive program, Manatron, uh, well, we call it Manatron, the, the technical, actual program is called Pro Balm Ascent. Um, I was talking to John Logan up at Lain County, who is our service provider for this, these programs, and I was told by him that it should work, but he's never done it before. Um, this, the reason I say he's never done it before is because currently we have, he is our only service contractor for this program, he's it. Um, and so, he is my only point of contact for this program, and he's the person who does all the installs, and if he's a little wary to put it on, I'm not even going to try to venture to do it. Um, so, at this point, we don't know if the assessor stuff will go. Um, I've already upgraded a few computers around here, uh, facilities and properties is completely Windows Ten right now, only because they don't have any special software, um. And the reason I'm, I'm doing, uh, all my upgrades, trying to fulfill something. Mike Laporee did not get a new computer. His, um, computer, I used his to see, out of the programs that are currently installed on his computers, when I do a Win Seven to Win Ten upgrade, what programs are gonna work, what programs are not gonna work of his. So, hit, that's how he utilized his computer. They've just recently received a new computer, because his was very, very, very old. And, um, so, his is working just fine, but I wanted to get his computer that way, that department was entirely Windows Ten, and they can kind of help each other out, I'm trying to learn the program since they haven't received training yet. The jail has a new computer up there, one computer being Windows Ten, one computer being Windows Seven Pro. Um, I left one Windows Seven computer up there to see, um, that way they can keep working, because we know it's going to work, and one Windows Ten computer up there, because they are unique in that they have a lot of different users using one computer. So, I'm fighting through issue, I'm already finding issues and managing that, um, as far as printers, and what people see on their desktop, and having certain files show up where they need them, and where they're used to them. So, I'm strategically trying to go around the courthouse and trying to figure out, okay, what's going to work, what's going to break. And that way, I can, uh, have a better understanding of what I'm gonna give myself, and then I can claim a little bit easier for it. Um, so far, like I said, everything has been good, a lot of the users are getting used to it, but we do need to have a training here fairly soon. Uh, that way, when I go around and I start doing the big install of your guys' computers and the rest of the departments, um, that we can do, they're at least somewhat exposed to Windows Ten. Um, the only way to learn Windows Ten is going to be by using it, but at least with a short, one-hour training, maybe two hours, depending on how, how adept we go, um, they at least have some sort of exposure and understand what they're, what to see. Um, so, that's going to be, that's how I've been handling it so far, and, um, made some pretty good progress. I'm really happy with everything that I've seen, but there are, I'm running into problems, and that's why I'm doing it this way, so I know what the problems are now, not later.
Yeah, an example of problems.
Uh, problem number one would be up in the jail, having, having a default printer for every user be the jail printer. Um, right now, uh, when a new profile is created on a computer, it's new, it's completely fresh. And so, I would have to go through every single user and set up their profile entirely, that being setting up the printer for them, getting their files, getting shortcuts for them, installing web certificates so they can get into LEDs. Um, it's all very unique to that user. So, extrapolate all those things for one user, multiply it by eight, I would have to, that's a lot of time to be spent in one place. And so, I'm trying to figure out, how can I establish those things, so I don't have to manually go in every single time and set up these things every single time for every single user? Um, that's one problem I'm running into on Windows Seven, I knew how to do that, and Windows Ten, I don't know how to do that. Uh, but I am, I'm trying, figuring it out, and I have accomplished, uh, a couple of things with the printers, um, but I haven't gotten what I wanted quite yet. Um, so, that's just one of the problems that I have run into. There's bugs in it, um, that's one thing that people, a lot of people are saying, Windows Ten, oh, gosh, it's got lots of bugs. Well, of course, it's new, it's got bugs, but overall, it's probably the most stable release of an operating system I've seen. Um, there's, there's some bugs here and there, started graphics issues, maybe a screen won't quite be fully, you can't see the entire window on the screen, you might have to move it over, or adjust it, just to be able to see certain options. But, um, but it's things that more likely will be, um, fixed in, in future updates. Um, and that's kind of the main thing that we're fighting with, is Windows Seven at some point in time will not be supported. Um, we're not entirely sure when, we've got mixed reports on that, but nonetheless, it's going to happen. No if, ands, or buts about it, it's going to happen, Windows Seven will have the same fate that XP did, and it just won't be serviceable anymore.
And one of the things we're doing, too, which Josh is doing a good job, is talking to Lain County Manatron folks about the support of software, where we found out, no. Another one would be Vadam, talking to Vadam directly. Um, the health department's software, which he's been doing research on now, do they support Windows Ten? And those are all things that we need to do for each user. And so, the idea here is, um, this puts a lot on Josh's play, but at the same time, if we go through this process properly, it should be fairly smooth. Now, will we be able to move all the users to Windows Ten before July thirty-first? No, but hopefully, we can find out the ones we can and get those done, and that's kind of the approach we're taking. And the testing that he's doing is a good shot, because that'll give us a good idea if there really are issues with some, just regular things like your printers, uh, printer copier machines, the big M L piece, those little buggers can be a bummer. So, we need to go to. So we need to go to, are you Rico here? I can't remember. Yeah, go to Rico and say, you have a Windows ten driver. Those are just simple things that nobody would think about, but they cause us all kinds of grief. So that's the, the fund that he's gonna be having until the end of July, is trying to roll this out and helping as we can to, to get that done. But the big thing is, it can save you a lot of money. And you're gonna end up there anyway, so why not save money?
Yeah. Should we have a memo sent out to all the users that this transition is gonna be happening? Or do commissioners need to give you a note, yes, we're changing over because there's, there's gonna be departments?
Well, departments that can, I would let them know, but I think the way we're doing it a piece at a time is anybody who gets a new computer, really, we need to look at them and say, gosh, before we give you this new computer, let's see if you can run Windows ten on it and get a Windows ten computer. Which we've already started. But the rest of the users, I think going into each department and taking a look at their software and the users and doing it piece by piece like we are, instead of telling everybody you're going to Windows ten, because they're not. It's just the ones who meet the requirements. So I think the way we're doing it right now is probably a good way. And if, if we need somebody to come in and say, we can come back to you and say, hey, can you tell these people they can actually run on Windows ten? Save some money and, and I think if we do it that way, it might be better, if that makes sense.
Well, it sounded like further than the deadline and there's a cost savings, as though we, we need to be as aggressive as we can to get there.
I agree, it's just I don't want like the assessor who can't run Windows ten at this time because, uh, Pro Val and Ascend does not support Windows ten. I don't want him to get upset that we're not going to, you know, that we're gonna say we're gonna move to Windows ten, we're not, because we can't.
But eventually.
Eventually, he needs to be looking at that and so do the other departments. And, you know, that's kind of the last part on the, on the list that I had is we do an IT plan every year, it's a living document. We review it, we update it, we come up with budget figures and projects and stuff. We work with Denise on that and she hits us with a club when we get too carried away with it. Anyway, those are things we need to be looking at over the next couple of years. You have some software in some of the departments that's fairly dated. It's not, uh, new technology, it's old technology. And so when something like Windows ten comes out, they're gonna have a real issue going there. But they're also gonna have an issue with SQL Server twenty fourteen, which has been out now for the close to two years here in May. And some of them don't support it yet. Nor are they looking to in the future, so they're using things like Access two thousand and three. Well, gosh, how old is two thousand and three? Let me do the math on that. So I mean, you're talking thirteen year old software that they're still having to use to run that software. You look at that and then you look at the companies themselves and do they have a plan for the future? And a lot of them don't, they're what we're calling end of life on that software cycle and they're gonna push it as long as they can. Well, the question becomes is what if whoever their support people decide they don't wanna support it anymore? You have a department left high and dry without support. These are things I've experienced over the years and it's not pretty. I can give you an example of a county here in Oregon, who we found out, uh, end of November last year that they haven't supported anymore for their software. And now we're scrambling, trying to find a software program to replace it because it's got hiccups all the time. And it's just old software from back in the early nineties. And they just left it and, and here we go. So when I look at that, I look at some of the programs that we're running here at the county and I can see we see an end of life as far as their technology is concerned. And the best way to battle that is to be proactive, start budgeting money to replace that software. And it may be two or three years down the road, but if you're not budgeting now, we're not gonna get there. And then all of a sudden you're gonna be hit with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you're wondering where am I gonna come up with that money to replace that software?
So we anticipate Denise would have a lot of item to throw consideration for.
Well, it's kind of like, uh, uh, the computers, we have an E R and R fund, equipment replacement, repair fund. And we budget X amount of dollars each year for computers. What I'm saying is we need to start budgeting for our software that's outdated, that we could lose support on in a couple of our critical departments here at the county. And so we need to start budgeting now for that, so.
Put, put some money aside to build.
Correct, and then we need to monitor that real close and say, you know what, in the next year or two, we need to get some new software. Because we're running on two thousand and three software or relying on that software.
Well, it's not just the software, it's also the program of the computer. Running on two thousand and three, two thousand and seven for Microsoft is a problem in itself. We're gonna have all these oh seven computers that are not gonna be supported by Microsoft anymore. So we're not gonna be getting updates, we're gonna be more vulnerable to viruses and other issues because we're not updating our programming, but we can't because our software is so outdated. It's a, it's, it's a nasty circle to get in and we really need to move forward.
I think in this whole discussion, just in gen, in the general sense and kind of speak for the whole board. I mean, I look back ten years ago where we were at, where we're at today. The, the discussion around Windows ten versus seven, it sounds like it's inevitable. I don't think this board is gonna fight any of that if we can just do a good job of planning. You know, not only for the actual upgrades and installations and, and what, what software is gonna be supporting anymore for the financial planning. I think we're on board because that's the world we live in, we don't drive those decisions, those decisions are driven for us. And we just have to be as proactive in preparing financially and disruptions to our services or our operation as we can be, so. And that's what that's about.
Yeah.
And these are the, these are, you've got three hotspots, we're already working on public health. But I mean, these are some hotspots that we really need to, to take care of in the near future. I was gonna ask about that and mental health, are there any?
Mental health is probably the best off out of all of your departments. Uh, mental health is, is so nice right now, they're completely online. They have no problem with that, uh, data issues, security issues, they are, they're very, very well off. They kind of give you an order of urgency out of these three. Manatron, the Ascend and ProVal, that, it scares me. Because we're getting into a really bad situation where I only have one point of contact and that's John Logan at Lane County. That's it. If I have a problem, he's my only person to go to. So if John, um, decides to quit and go somewhere else.
Or retire.
Or retire or anything bad, um, you know, we're, we're done. So Manatron scares me the most. Out of this, second would be public health, public health is in a pretty bad situation right now. Currently, they have two pieces of software. Uh, one of those is called Metasoft. Metasoft is their billing program. And Metasoft, they've had for quite a while and it is what's called a client software. Which means that this program only lives on a computer, that's it. So that, if that computer ever died, that's the end of it. What I'm doing to try to alleviate that and save us is I can back up to the server, but at the end of the day, that program still only lives on the computer, that's it. Computers, as you well know, can go out in a heartbeat and when they go, they're gone, um, that's the end of it. And so, um, that one does scare me. Also, with Metasoft, they're on version nineteen, is not Windows ten supported. With their, with the purchase that they have done, they could, they have to buy the next version, which the latest version is version twenty. Version twenty does support Windows ten. So it's a, it would be a fairly easy fix to go from version nineteen to twenty. However, that does not solve the problem of it not being a server program. It's again, just a program that lives on a computer, just like any other program that we have on that laptop or that you may have at your house. And so that's, that's an issue. The second program they also use is called Ailers. Ailers is a reporting program and I'm not entirely, I won't be able to give a very good description on how they utilize it, but I know it's some sort of patient reporting program. It's mandated by the state of Oregon that we do use Ailers on the Bay Side of Texas. And so we cannot get away from them. However, their current setup was purchased back in the nineties and will only work on server, on SQL Server two thousand and three. And, um, and with that, I don't have a copy of Server two thousand and three and they just recently went through a new server upgrade. So the only way that I'm able to make their current, this reporting program work is running on their old server. However, Ailers does offer an option for cloud-based, um, software. So it would be resembling the same model that, uh, Mental Health has gone, uh, where they use a program called Credible and that's, they live in it, so long as they have an internet connection, they can work, end of story. Um, there's no troubleshooting from my part or anything, it is a program that is completely cloud-based. We don't have data issues, security issues that we have to go through over there. As far as their meeting the encryption requirements for HIPAA and, uh, and other agencies there. But those two programs really concern me, so public health would be my second. And unfortunately, I don't have prices for you, um, I just found out about these not too long ago. And I don't have prices of what it would cost to go to those, um, but they are something I would really like to, um, see if I can start being creative for, only because they, again, they're, they scare me as far as if, if things started going over there, we're gonna be in panic mode. They are being backed up, however, if a computer dies, the software went with it and we're just, we're getting into a lot of headaches and we'll have to repair that. The third one, as far as urgency, would be Vadem. Vadem, we've, we've, I guess we've had some issues as far as, uh, getting certain reports to be generated from Vadem this year. I don't know if you can speak on that at all, but I know there were certain things I ran into this year with Vadem.
Well, the Affordable Care Act required a different level of reporting, but I feel like Mickey was able to generate those reports just recently.
Yeah, they're working with us on that.
They are. One thing, the reason I put them on this list here was because from a supports, um, perspective, I do a lot of their work for them. And I know with my predecessor, he was pretty upset about this, where, um, we have to go through when an update comes out. It's, it's up, you know, I have to take care of the updates and handle the updates for everything. They're the only vendor that I work with that does it this way, um, not a problem, that's, that's the way it is, that's what I'll do. But for the amount of money we pay for that, we don't get a whole lot of support from them, um, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Another thing that are other options, we use a program, uh, the clerk's office called Helion. And Helion does have options that do capture some of these, um, some of these, uh, software, what they do. ORCATS is, uh, is used for the tax reporting and that's done by Helion. And so there might be an opportunity to go to one vendor for a lot of our software options. And by doing that, um, it just increases the odds of problems not happening. Or if they do, I've got one point of contact and I can go to a company that will get it taken care of everything. So that's why I put Vadem on the list, only because from an IT perspective, um, they are, um, they're kind of hard to manage. But nonetheless, it does work for them and I'm not the one who uses this, so this is only my perspective from the IT, the IT side.
So Josh, working with you, the users and things, I think all we need in the future is a recommendation, what we do differently.
Yes, yeah, I think so.
And IT is the less budget for now, so you're two or three down the road, we're, we're ready for it.
Yeah, and as Josh says, we're paying quite a bit for something that doesn't provide a lot of service returns, so. I mean, I'm not a user, but the actors need to be on board, Denise.
Just following here and here from everybody, it sounds like we have an immediate need in this next budget year and that's Manatron. But that, if, if we're sitting here with only one person for support for Josh, it sounds like probably sooner than later, we should be moving there. And so we're just getting ready to go into budget time here and shortly. Is that number of a hundred and fifty thousand on Manatron, does that a pretty good number?
A year, yeah, last year, um, I was at a meeting where one of the other county assessors was telling me that that's how much Manatron told them to budget. And they've been budgeting now for a couple of years to move.
Manatron does have an upgrade.
Yeah, so your options are, uh, Josh mentioned Helion as an option, which it is. And they're a local Oregon company and they do provide good support, have some clients that use Helion. There are some other counties that use Manatron and what, the, the company is called Thomas Reuters that, that owns Manatron. And they have Lane County provide support for it and John Logan's the key there. They also have a newer version of their software that they could upgrade to. And the newer version of their software, which is actually a total different program. And I, and they changed the name on me three times now, but for the years, last couple of years. But that newer program, there was an upgrade path for people who were on Pro Val and Ascend to move to it for about a hundred and fifty grand. That's what I was told from another assessor. So if you budget for that and say over the next year or two, you budget for that or three, however long, they're gonna continue to support Pro Val and Ascend, that would be something where we would work with the assessor and say, how can we help? My concern today was, gosh, guys, let's start budgeting for this, let's be prepared. Same with Vadem, I don't know what's going on there. We need to work with the users, departments on this and come up with a plan. But the big thing is, let's budget for it. So if something happens sooner rather than later, at least we have some budgets set aside. We, we prepared halfway for this and, uh, we can go through that change.
Was Vadem a Canadian one?
Vadem's out of, uh, Kelowna, Canada, yeah.
And they wanted to pull out of the US, correct?
There have been rumors, um, and that's something where we need to work with the department on that and find out what's going on. And, and as, as the geeks here at the front, our job is to make recommendations and prepare, just like we are with Windows ten. This is the same kind of thing, only we're doing it with actual applications instead of the operating system, right? We're doing the same thing, we're preparing, we're trying to get ready for this migration. For us, it's implementing new software, it's, uh, it's just part of what we do. For those departments, they live in it, that's their lifeline. And there's a four letter word, I call it a four letter word, change, which is really hard to do. Change is very difficult and to change your everyday way of life is a very difficult thing to do. So that's why we need to work with these departments and make sure that when we go forward with this, they're prepared and they're ready for that four letter word. They can make that change.
Four letter word.
Yeah, 'cause I've had a lot of users say the four letter word when we're trying to change. How I make that analogy? Yeah, that's, that's where that comes from.
Does you think those ten allow your boxes to have a longer lifespan? Are we still looking at a replacement?
I think, and I can't speak too much on this because I've, I've only been around for a couple of months now, but I think the reason we chose a three year lifespan on most computers, when we purchase a computer from Dell, we get a three year warranty from them. And so at no point will we ever have a period in which a computer will not have a warranty on it. And I think that's kind of more what we're trying to achieve.
It is, but at the same time, to be honest, most of your computers will last three to five years. What I was alluding to earlier about extending life with Windows ten and having a platform is, let's say that you had your computer for, uh, two years and Microsoft said, just like they did with XP, we're not gonna support Windows seven anymore. We can migrate to Windows ten and we can get another two, three, four years of life out of that computer. We try, right now, between three to five years, what are we, about four or five years? We replace your computer. So if they stop supporting Windows ten and we still meet the requirements for Windows ten, we can get another couple of years out of that computer. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that software replacement's gonna be very speedy, so I was wondering if, if there's some budget relief if we do something longer than a three year replacement.
Uh, there's, well, like I say, we're in reality, probably about four or five years, we're squeezing out of those computers. I have some clients that go seven years, boy, you're really rocking it. Anytime you get past five, each day you say, thank you, thank you. And you, you turn it on. So that's, that's kind of how we look at them. Each computer we get here has a three year warranty. You can extend that warranty to four or five years, but by the time you do that, you could have bought a new computer. So we don't do that, um, if that makes sense. So those last four, fifth year we get out of the computer, we're knocking on wood and doing whatever we can.
But that is something we need to look at because maybe a, a computer that doesn't get a lot of use, maybe that one can stay in service longer than other ones that are highly used. But that is something we need to look at because maybe a a computer that doesn't get a lot of use, maybe that one can stay in service longer than other ones that are highly used. So.
So, not being a techy person, you've mentioned Helion, Manatron. Is Helion at all if we were able to change over to that one? It can do the taxation side also?
It can.
Is there anything that can, what about Vatom? Do they have a?
They don't have an accounting. They have tax assessment and clerk is what Helion does. Um, and like I say, they do a good job. You're using Helion for clerk, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And and are they happy with it? Yeah, we we have some other counties that are running Helion. We have some others that are running Manatron. Uh, Helion, they're they're in, they're headquartered out of Salem. They've been around for what, twenty years? And they really pride themselves on their support and they do a good job. And you've got eight or nine support people there. Uh, Manatron is sunsetting ProVal and Ascend. That's why you're getting support from Lane County and not from Thomas Reuters to buy Manatron out. So, what their their pitch is, is we would really like you to move to our new software, um, whatever its name is today.
The new Manatron.
The new Manatron software, which uh is either the the court assessor, either way they look at it, it's gonna be moving to a whole new program because the new Manatron is totally different than what they're currently using, if that makes sense.
So, whether we went to Helion or the new?
However, John Logan will and then Lane County will continue to support ProVal and Ascend. That's kind of your clue. It's kind of like it'll be.
I think the best way to probably develop a recommendation would be, you know, I'm not a user. I don't know the functionality that Ann's needing or Jay's needing or Nikki's needing out of their their program or any of these other ones. So, I think the best way would be, I can look at it from my IT perspective and say, okay, I know this stuff. Now, let's talk about what do you want out of a program. Let's go look at all of our options. What do we have? What are the functionalities that each one provides and which ones seem the most fitting for their department? Obviously, I'm not gonna be the one making that decision because I'm not the one using it every day. Um, it's really up to them. But we can look at everything and with the mixture of looking at it from an IT perspective, as far as how how long can we get support for, um, you know, how long have they been around, uh, a whole bunch of different things. We can, I think we can more accurately.
Basically, what Josh is saying, we could probably go out end of this year, whenever for an RFQ, not an RFP, but an RFQ. Request for quote, which you're not stuck with at that point, right? So, you could do an RFQ just to get pricing and what's available. So, we'd know pretty much what we're looking at. And that RFQ should be, the requirements should be developed by the departments themselves because they know what they're doing. And we're we're happy to help any way we can on the geek stuff, but that's probably would be a good step to take. And I, the numbers I threw out are just numbers that I've heard out on the street. So, they're not anything that you could rely on. And I would do an RFQ because then you're not behooving to purchase a system, but then you'll know which system you wanna buy and you'll have a good idea of the cost would be.
We know what qualifications.
Exactly, exactly. So, did I, are we getting close? Uh, again, my big thing there was we need the budget and we need the plan and now is the time to do it.
Uh, yeah, at some point before we get in budget, maybe another recap.
Absolutely.
Yes, with the specific topics.
Well, I I think the strategy that you use of working with those departments of the buy-in from those departments of, because changes are the ones that work with programs and all that stuff. Um, I think that's really important, especially where we have one for sure that is, we're hanging out there.
We are, yeah, exactly.
As soon as those departments would buy into what I regret, we need to go. That'd be really helpful for me. Because they're they're the ones with ownership and they're the ones that have to be happy with the programs that they work with.
The biggest thing is, none of us, that department or anybody else, are, don't have the expertise specifics as you. So, if we really educate them on the books and content of the programs and stuff.
We're we're here to help. Like I say, they can be on us at any time.
It looks like you're here to spend money every time you can be.
So, Josh, but let's go back to Manatron.
Okay.
You've you've talked about how nervous you are.
Yes.
This one fellow is the only one providing support.
Correct.
Is he providing support to anyone else, including Lane County?
There's, I think there's five counties that are still using ProVal and Ascend.
But they're all units, which you.
They've they've every single. Every single has already created a budget for them. So.
They're working on it, yeah. And that's why we are here too.
Yeah, John, so far, I haven't utilized John very much. I haven't needed to because the program, I just haven't had very many issues with it, which is a good thing. But nonetheless, when a problem does happen, um, it is, he's the only one. That's it. And so.
We have a lot of problems in our taxation side now.
No.
Well, I was just about to reply soon.
Yep, so.
You have to really help assess yourself.
Those are the two major ones and that I I'm very very worried about.
We work with them very closely so we bring back a recommendation.
Yeah, I'll be working with Beck now, who are in Public Health.
Yeah.
To accomplish that.
And get them educated, but also get us educated so that when they come to us, we understand what they're telling us.
Beck, please. Um, I do wanna add one more thing that's not on this list here and Brad doesn't know about this. More of something that I have found is a concern of policy and that's data retention. Um, currently, there is no data retention policy at all. Um, and right now, it's pretty much just hang on to it. Just hang on to it. It's stored somewhere either on the server, on Buffalo, and that's that's the end of it. It just kind of lives there. However, at some point in time, data builds up. If you give more and more data and there's more things to store, which have much more size and which require a lot of hard drives. But data retention, handling that, it doesn't need going and buying new hard drive every time you get to your maximum capacity there. And um, one thing that I just see as something maybe to work on in the future would be coming up with a policy for data retention. Obviously, it's going to vary for each department because each department has their needs. Forever is an answer. If we need data forever, that's perfectly fine. However, if some records, if we only need to hang on to it for seven years, you know, we don't need to hang on from, for a page from ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-six, or however old certain things are. So, it's just something else that um for the future, for twenty sixteen, is to talk about at some point in time.
Basically, that would be cleaning out our private system.
Yeah, and we.
But the data is still retained someplace in the cloud.
Yeah, the issue you have here is like your emails. We can't delete anything. We have to hang on to it forever. And with three sixty-five on the government side, Microsoft's doing that for us. Uh, when you look at the sheriff's department, they actually have things that they have to by law delete uh every three to six months, which they haven't been doing, but I know they're working on. With uh setting up and having a retention plan for the county's a great thing. And according to the state of Oregon, the person who would cover most departments other than a few would be the county clerk. And that person would say, here's the retention. Now, when you get into clerk data, there's data that they have that's probably over a hundred years old, meaning that's how long we have to keep it. And believe it or not, the feds do not believe that a DVD will last longer than thirty-five years. So, even though technology proves them long, wrong, CDs and DVDs have only been tested to last that long because the technology's not that old. So, they actually microfiche still, or they will send it out to have it microfished or fished or however you say that. Uh, so, we have to look at each department, but I would say we would work with the clerk on this to come up with a plan. And then the other departments who don't fall uh in direction with the clerk, we might go department by department and say, how long does the law say you have to keep this data? Because we know some of them need to be deleting, some save it for life and just different requirements and include the clerk in that process. That that would be normal how we've done it in other counties.
And we did just purchase new hard drives uh in from fifteen. So, I mean, we're fine now. I guess that would be something that we'd also accomplish. Um, so, we do have lots and lots of storage. However, at some point in time, there's things that could be deleted and then free up space and that would prevent us from ever having to buy more hard drives or anything.
Just my own balance system, I keep everything because of the old slogan of everything have to be kept. But it would take me six months to go through my balance system. We need to put in there in two thousand and nine.
Yeah, unlike the IRS, it's what is it, seven years on your personal tax return? I remember. I could be wrong, but it seemed to me that's the seven year. Uh, after seven years, you can shred it or do whatever. Um, but in a county, it's a little bit different. Like I say, clerk's forever. Uh, some of the other departments should be deleting and some may be there forever too. I just don't know. We have to go. Go each department, say how long we need to keep this stuff.
The next time you have somebody that says DVDs won't last more than thirty-five years, tell them you know someone that's got an eight-track tape. So, we're just.
I resemble that remark, so. I have old man. Yeah, the old LPs.
Yeah.
Just gotta have two can cans, that's right.
Give them vinyl.
And yes, Glenn Frey died.
Yeah.
I have something for Brad and Josh. Um, as we work to on the remodel for moving to New Corritia. I'm gonna need Josh to be working with our our DOC department, directions, teachers.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think it's gonna be a hard fix because we have a little line difference in here and it goes to Christmas Valley. So, I I'm not, I don't know.
So, you're gonna have an office at the annex?
We have an office.
So, you're ready.
We're gonna be down here on uh on Oregon.
Okay, so you're moving up here and then we're gonna need to move down connection here. That's something we need to take a look at. And that's something that.
I'll do a day on that.
Yeah.
Figure out wiring.
Cool. As long as we're wired and that.
And I'll have, I'll have my DOC there to catch you.
Yeah.
It's a mouse. It's a big mouse. But that's everything I think that we have for you. You guys have any other questions for us?
No, my head's exploding inside.
Perfect.
You're bored.
Perfect.
We keep you out, huh? Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, very well. But maybe Jeff on the team at Public Health, at Manatron, maybe Jeff Lewis on your office. Lewis' synopsis.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll do that.
Hearing is one thing. Hearing tends to, and that goes a lot deeper.
Well, if you can give us a few weeks, we'll have a lot better information for you too and kind of come up. And we can work with Denise on a plan to uh that we can hand out and say, okay, here's what we're looking at. And if you want us to meet, we can do that. But yeah, we've got some, got some things we need to work on.
Appreciate you, everybody.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next time, come have some of my shirt.
We will.
That's pretty much it. Go back to your latest other things.
Yeah, uh, I think we're all on board with next Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, with AOC coming down for information sharing. Did that work out for everybody?
Yeah, I sent an email out.
That's how I told her, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's she had sent an email out over the weekend verifying.
It's it's less time than what a US senator gives us.
Yeah.
They're onsite. I didn't see them.
Tending. Possible physical male seat is what I had, but it's.
Mike, Mike Arthur and others use to make a tour of the holiday counties at least once a year in the system.
Public Health was scheduled to be in at Burgland that day.
Who is?
Public Health, so.
At Penn?
They're there all day.
Oh.
They'll be in town. They're doing a training, so.
Yeah, let's see if maybe, I don't know, if there's conference rooms available. If your juvenile conference room next Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, might be available for us to meet with AOC.
I believe that's available.
Well.
Grangeries no longer happen downstairs.
Right. So, next item for me, tomorrow, I'll be on a call at one thirty. This is on the renewable energy uh fuel standards and the Rams uh with Senator Wyden's office. Senator Merkley's office is gonna join us. Adrian from back is, as we heard Senator Merkley say, he's on the idea of being able to reclassify vital mass on federal lands to renewable energy. And there is a bill in the House, uh, cosponsor, must be in the Senate too. I just got a note from Chris Marklin at NACO this morning. He had given a presentation last week to a House Subcommittee. But Senator Wyden's a cosponsor of this bill. So, we're gonna have Wes Look and Julia from Senator Wyden's office, maybe Sarah tomorrow, Bittelman, uh, Adrian from Senator Merkley's office. I've asked Jeff, the subject matter expert from Red Rock, to be on the call. And so, we'll be discussing how we might proceed forward because they have opened up all the renewable energy uh information or or standards and qualifications uh under this new bill. So, that's pretty exciting because it sounded really positive last week in the conference call we had. Uh, my trip, I don't know if anybody had noticed it on the, on our calendar, to Jacksonville, the Whiflick trip, which I would have been flying out the twenty-third uh of this month. And flying back probably on the twenty-eighth. I've canceled my attendance and that. Looking at the agenda, Chris is gonna be there, Chris Marklin, as I said before, from NACO. I just didn't feel like, even though NACO pays for most of that, that it'd be a good use of my time at this particular juncture. Uh, we're gonna have a sector meeting with the workforce, Eastern, East Cascades Workforce Group, uh, sector being the different business sectors in band on the fourth of February. Commissioner Leonard's talked about the Agne. Uh, the NACO conference, I was going to go to that. Uh, I'm not gonna go now. Kind of a similar thing. I'm probably gonna attend. The WIR would like a report on our Whiflick uh participation. And I'm probably gonna save that travel for the one that's a little bit further or closer out here. It's gonna be in Wyoming in May. I don't have that date, which it's not during me right now, but uh, that's a real quick and dirty.
Commissioner Leonard, did you have anything?
I already did. I did earlier.
Did I know, for chance, something came online?
Nope. No, thank you.
I'll give my little update. Last week, I was at the West, the Sustainable Northwest Western. Juniper Alliance may be in about a year if you can, even that. But the state legislator put in the money aside to help promote small business upstarts and utilization of Juniper. Unfortunately, we don't have anything already in place going in kind of Lake Inmore. We used to have something in, reach a little bit in the climate. But the whole emphasis there is, is promoting small business startup on utilization of Juniper. And we only know that we have lots of. Coming up this week, I'm on the State Working Group for Woodsmoke, the EQ. We have our second meeting. We had a first meeting a couple of weeks ago. We had a second meeting in Eugene, which is leaving on Wednesday afternoon to be there at nine o'clock. And it goes all day, so it'll be Friday when I get back. But that's it, uh, the two Woodsmoke Working Group. The, on the State Working Group for Natural Gas Extension, uh, PUC did recommend to the commission that there'll be two of us, kind of the commissioner's phone app. But I haven't heard how the station or the commission came out on that. Have you, Brad?
No, I have not.
I need Barbara, Martha Nice from the POC. Uh, the ATV and highway group, we made a couple of show and again, same. Uh, I think that's moving along too. Their first meeting was, kind of shotgun, kind of actually. But the state folks with ODOT and with the Department of Rec, very good facilitators, they've given us narrowed down. Hopefully, come back with a recommendation to the nationalization on, on changes to ATV use on state highways. Not all highways, but this group has, would come up with boundaries for where it's equipped. Even crossing the highway right here is a subject. And I think we got that pretty much nailed down as a recommendation. But any little stretch of highway to give from point A to point B, to again, connect with other ATV routes, it'll be a little more difficult in coming up with criteria. Uh, next week, uh, is a broadband conference in Bend. Uh, the state USDA person, and it's going, and I was working on that a while back, to get a conference here in Bend, because they tend to have them around in different parts of the nation, but we actually got some folks from DC coming out for this. So it'd be a two-day, uh, session, some conference. And the main emphasis, how do we get USDA and broadband? You, you, USDA has a program for broadband, also does FCC, but USDA is much more rural friendly and that sort of, so we have them coming in for a statewide conference in Bend. And then the day after that, uh, I'll be touring these folks from DC around Lake County, hopefully we get as far as the western Adele. The whole emphasis there is to educate folks in DC on their broadband program. How does it fit or not fit with broad geographic spans and very low population? And that's going to be a theme of the conference. Anything else? Then if there's nothing else, then eleven thirty-one, meeting in Germany.